With liberty and justice for all. Thank you, all right, roll call please.
Vera.
Here.
Moots.
Here.
Carlsen.
Here.
Ding Felder. Citro.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
And Skalko.
Here. All right, uh, we'll put, yeah, sir, who, who is it, Marty?
Yes, Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney, Mr. Chairman, members of council, good afternoon. For the purpose of the record, I'd like to state that because of the COVID-19 state of emergency, uh, this virtual emergency special call meeting of the city council is being held in accordance with declarations and provisions of the governor's executive order 2019 as extended by EO 20-150 and by city council resolution number 2020-225. Uh, it's being conducted by remote participation or teleconferencing, which is referred to by the state of Florida statutes and rules as communications media technology. The purpose of the meeting is to evaluate the effects of the COVID-19 state of emergency and the recent cancellations on city council's meeting calendar and to discuss options moving forward, including adjustments to the meeting schedule and related matters. Written public comments have been distributed to city council members. To find out why that is, and in the meantime, uh, you can move on, I believe you do have a, um, a speaker number one on your agenda.
All right, so we will move on to item number one, we have Dr. Holt with the Health Department here as a guest speaker to give us a, a report, quick update on the COVID-19, uh, situation. Dr. Holt, if you're on the line and can hear me, if you'd like to go ahead and start. Dr. Holt.
Hello?
Uh, is this Dr. Holt?
Yeah, sorry, I got, I guess I lost audio connection on the, my computer, so I switched to the phone.
Okay, if you'd like to go ahead and, uh, and begin your presentation, uh, regarding COVID-19.
Yeah, um, well, thank you for this opportunity, um, yeah, as we know, that y'all know, we've, we've been in this fight for, so early March, we saw one of the earliest cases, uh, and uh, it has really, really evolved rapidly and it's a very different, uh, circumstance than we had when we first started where most of our cases were coming from outside the community, now we're, we're deeply in a term called community-based transmission, so essentially, um, you know, we, we have a, um, spreading of the virus that could be in any part, we've looked at it across zip codes and others, there are some zip codes with more activity than others, but everybody's got more than, than we want. Um, you know, just looking at the totality of the numbers, uh, we've got about twenty-four thousand five hundred cases, uh, what's most important is to look at what's happening really in the, the, the real, the recent time, so we picked fourteen days versus seven days, fourteen days is, is kind of the total, uh, incubation period, so you're looking at, uh, infections that have occurred, uh, in, in a, uh, most recent time, it gets you a, a sense of just how many, how rapid and how fast it's spreading, uh, so we went through a huge growth period, uh, um, a lot of virus towards the end of, middle of May into just, just recently, uh, we sort of started to, to peak out, if you are hopefully peak out and plateau, so we looked at our fourteen day trends and we've, we're, we're right around six hundred, six hundred and fifty, uh, day to day, you may see some variations, we had four hundred and something today, a lot of that also depends on how many tests you get back, um, that leads us to start looking at how many of the, the percentage of those tests come back positive, and, uh, you know, the, the idea is that you want to do a lot of testing so you get, um, a broad, uh, inclusion and make sure, see if you can't get, um, the, the, the majority of the virus that you're in the community, you can get, uh, tested positive and then lead to, um, hopefully interventions, so our positivity rate, uh, is drifting down, um, but it's, 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 it's around fourteen percent today, we had a better day today, it was closer to twelve percent, um, and what all that means is, is the virus, at least in our community, is, is stabilizing, if that's the best term, um, but this is a very, we don't want to be, we don't want to keep where we are, we must get down significantly, uh, just to put it in perspective, um, if you look at the number of cases, uh, per hundred thousand, per capita, uh, we're having probably almost ten times what New York City is currently having, um, we're having less than Miami, but they're having, uh, an extraordinary high, um, and so we've just got to keep doing everything we can as a community to keep, keep the virus, uh, at bay, away from each other, and that's that whole concept of social distancing and masking, if you will. And ultimately, ultimately, the complication you have is just, you just, you don't want people getting really sick into the hospitals and dying, and so we modify our efforts to try to help our hospitals, we're doing a lot of that with, uh, um, some testing of our long-term care and putting them, uh, getting them in places outside of the hospital, um, but despite that, we're still having a lot of spread, so our hospitals currently are, uh, very, very busy, most people would, they would define it as, this is like our busiest time in the winter, not the summer, and so, uh, they are managing, but they clearly, uh, uh, are stressed, um, so that's a big high level, um, if, if, I hope that is a beginning point of either questions or discussions or however the forum you would like, uh, this to be.
All right, uh, thanks very much, what I'll do is now, uh, go to council members, um, you know, since you've given us an, an overview, uh, are there any council members that have any questions for the doctor?
This is Councilman Goode.
Councilman Goode, go ahead.
Uh, you know, I was a victim, it's a come to the COVID-19 disease and it gone through a few complications, uh, and I just wanted to get with the good doctor to ask a question because one of the specialists that, uh, I was in seventy-seven zing advised that vitamin D, uh, is a good remedy to probably help folks with their immune system to be immune to this disease, and I just wanted to figure out, uh, or ask, have you heard of that at all, Dr. Holt, uh, since I had an endocrinologist tell me that even leaves becomes a pigment in the skin, uh, derives from black and Hispanic folks with, that, with the sun is different from, uh, our kind of Caucasian, uh, uh, family, so just want to know if you, have you heard anything about vitamin D?
Yes, ma'am, um, yeah, I have, um, I'm, I'm not on the front lines of, of managing patients, um, my, many of my colleagues, but I know I've heard them, you know, talk about this, uh, it, it does seem to be that if you have a low vitamin D level, you get a worse, uh, illness, uh, um, so it, it does seem to have some correlation with, with how bad a case you get, uh, as far as does it, uh, keep the virus out of you, I, um, I don't believe that's what they're looking at, so your risk of infection is not diminished if, or increased, if you will, if you have, uh, low vitamin D, um, but if you do have a low vitamin D and you get infected, you are a, a risk for getting, um, sicker, um, so clearly, I, I don't know the distinction between vitamin D, which we get a lot from the sun, as you mentioned, versus, um, um, taking it, so, uh, I, 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 that's, that's all I know, right now.
Right, but what, you, thank you for trying to respond to the question, I'm just hoping that maybe your office can maybe get a little more research or ask or inquire from some of these other specialists and maybe get that out to the public, so, uh, maybe, it may not prevent them from getting the total disease, but maybe prevent them, uh, some people can reduce their immune system and may not, uh, get the disease, so that's just, uh, something I, I recently learned, uh, being a person who has suffered from this situation, and I would hope that your office would kind of look into that to maybe possibly get some good information out to the public or give some information, Joe.
Well, I'm, I'm, this evening, I'm participating in a medical society, a conference call, and with people, uh, who actually treat patients every day, so I'll make a point to ask them and, and see what I can do about that.
Glad you can get any information to me, to leave it to the public, so grateful, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Councilman Goode, I believe, uh, Councilman Ding Felder has joined the, the meeting and logged in, um, any other council members with questions for Dr. Holt?
Yeah, Ding Felder got a question, and Mr. Chairman, I've been on, uh, I've been on pretty much the whole time, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, sir, if you have any, uh, any questions.
Well, thank you, Dr. Holt, and, and thank you for your service to, uh, to the county, we've, we've been listening to you for months over at the EPG, um, I know you and your staff have been working non-stop, the, um, so the purpose of our meeting today, well, let's back up, um, uh, back in March, uh, former chairman, uh, Vera suggested and ultimately council agreed to, uh, stop our in-person meetings, and at that point in time, our numbers, as I recall, were bouncing around between ten and fifty new cases per day for the, for the county, and, and even at that point in time, in March and April and May, we completely stopped our in-person meetings out of concern for our staff and any members of the community who might need to attend our meetings, and we went to virtual meetings, um, in June, we began once again to go in person because we all believed that the numbers, uh, you know, were stabilizing and dropping, and unfortunately, as June progressed, they went the other direction, and now we are probably ten times, um, ten times the per day average, uh, of where we were back in March, so my question, my question to you, doctor, is, um, as we proceed, at some point, we'd like to go back to having in-person meetings, um, I personally don't think it's safe right now, um, I'd like your opinion on that, um, I know that you, I know that you joined us for a few minutes, uh, over at the convention center, but, but you had, you know, you had the lead to go to another meeting, I think, but you saw the setup over there, um, we are able to have some spacing, but at the end of the day, you know, council and staff and, and our attorneys, we were spending twelve, fourteen hours, uh, in that room with approximately a hundred, a hundred people coming and going, and, um, that didn't seem particularly safe to me, so, um, anyway, it's a long question, it's a lot of questions, um, if you could help us out and give us guidance in terms of when do you think it, it might be safe, is there a particular number that we, you know, maybe if we drop below a hundred per day or fifty per day, um, and also if our percentages perhaps drop down to, you know, ten percent or five percent, which is where we were originally, um, is that a safer place for us to start meeting in person, sorry for the long question.
No problem.
Yes, sir, and I, and I do apologize for not being able to, to stay at the last meeting, I think the, um, I, I think, um, and, and part of the challenge that, and the question, I think, is your, you know, where, where the presence of the city council resulted in a large number of people gathering together, uh, and that's hard to control, um, the number and where we would be, which, we need to, I, I want to see, um, a solid reduction, it's not going to drop precipitously, uh, but, uh, you kind of wait about a two to three week period of time to see i- if, if we can maintain the, uh, all the, the efforts the community is doing to, to get that down, so, uh, you're right, in early May, we, we had about, we were running about fifty cases a day, that was, that, even that was probably too high, uh, uh, but the, the reality was the way things opened up, and it wasn't necessarily probably when you do it, it's a matter of what happened after you did it, and we just, it just, it just exploded on us, as you described, so where would I like to be, uh, before I would, uh, have, uh, gatherings and, and, you know, above fifty, say, uh, even in an ideal place that y'all did have, I was quite impressed with the whole efforts that y'all were doing, uh, I would, um, I'd be wanting to see us down certainly below, uh, a hundred and fifty a day and with a good trend downward, uh, by that time, we'll also have, um, a more effective, um, ability to, to contact tracing, which begins to, to show, it, 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 it works when you can get that, uh, for our number in that hundreds, but not, you know, when you're at three hundred plus, so, um, that's, I, that's probably my best right now projection, when that will occur, uh, I think we'll know a lot more in the next two weeks how realistic that is, and I, I have to stay hopeful or, or else, um, you know, it, it's, it's, it's hard to keep, keep trying, I mean, you, you, we hadn't seen some results, but I'm optimistic, over the last week, um, they're dramatic reductions, but they are definitely reductions after an almost solid six weeks of nothing but upward, so I'll, I'll stop there.
And, and, all right. One other follow, one other follow-on question, Mr. Chairman, um, uh, you said somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred to a hundred and fifty new cases a day, how about percentages, doctor, um, right now, we're at twelve to fourteen, back in March and April, we were at, we were below five percent, um, of course, there was less testing and that sort of thing, I don't know, you know, how that impacts, but, um, assuming that we're going to continue testing at the same or higher level, what sort of percentage positive, uh, would you like us to, you know, like us to see at before we start easing up a little bit?
I, 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 I mean, the five percent is really kind of the benchmark, um, I, I know, a- and again, Penelas is below that now, uh, we are ramping up, we are ramping up our testing, we're, we're headed in that direction, but, um, you know, that five percent is, is a much more comfortable level, uh, assuming again, we're sustaining the testing, and actually, I believe we're going to see even more testing as, as some of the, the new ways of testing, uh, bring some of our doctors, uh, in the clinics, uh, able to do testing, uh, and, and so I think cumulatively, they're going to be very helpful to both getting that number up of tests, and, and that will certainly reduce the percentage, uh, that, that we're seeing, so I'll, I'll stop there.
All right, thank you, thank you, doctor, thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it.
Sure, any other council members with questions at this time?
Um, Vera, if I may, uh, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chairman Mendes Skalko, I appreciate it, uh, doctor, I just wanted to join in on a few things, number one, is, was indicative of others, including Councilman Ding Felder, uh, we thank you not only for your time here, but for your guidance in the EPG, um, you know, we, we in Hillsborough County and, and throughout the communities here, we rely on you, we are dependent upon you, we trust you, and, um, and, and we're really, really just in your debt for your work and your service, so again, thank you so much, sir, I, I had seen now at the, at the last council meeting, and I greatly regretted that you couldn't speak, um, it, it was ironic, you couldn't speak because you had a lot of folks there, note the irony, it, it, it happens, I guess, um, but doctor, I, I wanted to speak, if I may, um, just briefly, on the three-three-six-one-two numbers, those are in the North Tampa area, doctor, the, the University of South Florida area, um, the, the latest numbers I'm seeing is somewhere in the nine hundred and forty, nine hundred and fifty range on, uh, uh, COVID cases in that zip code, I believe, in, 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 in looking at the numbers, a lot of that number comes from the nursing homes there, uh, there's one or two particular, um, uh, 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 nursing homes there that have some significant numbers, um, I didn't know if you could speak about that, doctor, is that still true that it's nursing homes, if you know, if you know at this point?
Uh, yeah, um, yes, that is, the nursing homes, uh, very much distorted the, uh, number of cases by zip code early in our, um, early in our outbreak, our pandemic, um, and I, if, I believe you're right, that three-three-six-one-two, if it's in the, uh, vicinity of Bruce B. Gowns, Fletcher, and some others, there was a large nursing home that, um, you know, had a, um, was the target of some very focal testing with, uh, subsequently a hundred cases or more, uh, now that we're got so many cases, uh, in the last several weeks or month, those numbers don't impact the, the, uh, the absolute, um, to- total number of infections in that, that zip code to sort of create the degree of, of distorsion, if you will, so last, uh, about a week ago, uh, Thursday, I think it was, I did provide some, um, update on zip, by zip codes that looked at the most recent two-week intervals, and, and I think that three-three-six-one-two is, is a, is a case in point, because if you look at the, their total aggregate, we call it, since the very beginning, you know, they're, they're in the upper half, if you will, um, but if you then look at their most recent, um, couple of weeks, they're actually, um, you know, it's, if anything, their increases has been less than, um, the, they're, they're in the lower half as far as what's happening, um, during this period of time, so I think that, that's the most important indicator is how many infections are going on i- in the, um, the last two weeks and the two weeks before there, and three-three-six-one-two is kind of in the middle of the pack, if you will, um.
Okay, th- thank you, doctor, uh, we, again, we appreciate all your work, I know that we as elected officials have got to lead by example, um, either in every community across this country, uh, there's always voices of paranoia, irresponsibility, and demagoguery, uh, on COVID-19, and it's incumbent upon us elected officials to listen to the experts, people like you, and, um, and, and we're also increasingly thankful, uh, always thankful for your work, I know here in the city, any of us who have been, uh, tested have come into contact with Tiffany Klein, um, and we're just, you know, our hat is off to all of the scientists, uh, and the medical professionals who do such great work in this, so just again, sir, thank you for your work, it's, it's universally appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman. All right, any other council members with questions at this time? Hearing none, all right, thank you, Dr. Holt, we appreciate you, uh, coming on today and answering questions and briefing us, we appreciate it, um, at this point, we'll go back to other.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Councilman, sure.
Point of, point of, point of privilege, sir?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, I heard Mrs. Vera, Chairman Vera, uh, Councilman Vera talked about, uh, Nurse Tiffany, and it's a shame I've never knew her last name, but I want to personally let, uh, Ch- Chief John Bennett know that this young lady is a godsend, she is, uh, doing one hell of a job to make sure that the employees are taken care of, I know in my situation, uh, Nurse Tiffany was there all the way, from the time I was hospitalized to the time I got out, I just want to thank her for all of her work and the work she's doing with the city, and I yield back to her, thank you.
Thank you very much, um, we, uh, will go back to public comment, I know we have two speakers, uh, waiting to speak, Sue Ling, if you could bring them on and we'll begin with them, please state your name, of course, I don't know if it's, uh, I believe it's live, and of course, you have three minutes.
Yes, sir, the first speaker was Jessica Kramer.
All right, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Kramer, if you'd like to go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. C- Mr. Chairman, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, uh, Mr. Chairman and Council, uh, thank you, uh, my name's Jake Kramer, 401 East Jackson Street, number twenty-one hundred in Tampa, um, I appreciate everything that city council's doing to keep our community safe, uh, personally, I, I have a number of risks in my own family, and, uh, you know, like many of us, I've been more or less confined in my home for the last four months, so, you know, appreciate everything you all are doing and, and focusing on keeping everybody safe, Councilman Goode's, uh, welcome back, we've been, you know, praying for your recovery and, and thank you for your service, uh, council members, I'm following up on the letter that I sent you all yesterday urging you to consider, uh, fully virtual or hybrid virtual land use meetings, um, I've spoken to a number of colleagues in the land use community, uh, a number of attorneys at my firm, as well as Kami Corbett, David Mechanic, Truitt Gardner, uh, I've spoken to the Tampa Bay Builders Association, and I think there's a lot of industry support for, uh, moving to a more virtual model, I think the city attorney's office and your staff has done a great job under the circumstances figuring out how to safely perform these physical meetings, um, but I do think based on the numbers we're seeing, uh, we need to consider virtual meetings, a, a number of other communities are, are doing those, uh, Jacksonville and Orlando have actually gone to fully virtual land use meetings, and, uh, Pasco has an interesting model where they have a, a physical kiosk and a physical forum, uh, but everything else is fully virtual, so. City Attorney's Office, the land use community is here to, to help you all, however, however we can to do that, um, but again, appreciate everything you all are doing and, uh, want to work with you all to, to figure out how we can make sure we have a strong economy to return to once the pandemic is over, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Yes, the next speaker is David Mechanic.
Uh, yeah. Three minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members, um...
Um, I, uh, am also here to, uh, speak in favor of, um, going to a virtual hearing format. Uh, I would like to say, welcome back, uh, Councilman Goode's, I, um, very gratified that you're doing better and, uh, back in, back in the saddle. Um, I don't, I don't want to repeat what Jake just said, but, um, I, I would like to simply suggest that you all consider if it's a hundred percent virtual or a hybrid format, such as what Pasco County is doing, where it's, if somebody really does want to come to a public place, they can speak, they can hear what's going on at the hearing, and then speak to the City Council. Um, I, I would say that I understand first and foremost, um, your obligation is to provide for the safety of the citizens and, uh, the city employees and fellow council members, and we fully appreciate that. Uh, but we would ask that you go, or at least explore, the idea of a, of a virtual format. I would also like to add that in conversations with Gina Grimes, while she has not indicated what the council's preference would be, she did say, um, that no such virtual hearings could ever take place without a waiver, uh, signed by the applicant, which waives any basis for objection on the, based on the fact that, uh, there was a virtual hearing. And, and I think I can say, uh, that most of my clients would be willing to sign such a waiver, uh, and if they didn't, they would simply have to wait until, uh, council met back in person. So, but I do think you will have a lot of interest in people willing to sign a waiver, and, um, I would just encourage council to explore that option. Uh, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir, uh, is there any other public comment, or were those the only two speakers?
That is the only public comment for today.
Thank you very much, that's the buzzer, we'll move on to item number two on our agenda. We have staff reports here, um, if council did check, uh, the, uh, their email, I know that we were, uh, sent over, uh, calendar and then a grid showing, um, different options between in-person, virtual, and hybrid. Um, who is here to present for item number two?
Good afternoon, council members, this is Gina Grimes, the City Attorney. And the reason, the reason for the, um, the meeting today is to decide three different issues. The first issue is the manner in which you select to conduct your, uh, regular meeting, your CRA meetings and your workshops. And when I say manner, I mean whether you want to do it in person, uh, virtually, or a hybrid. The second issue is the manner in which you wish to conduct your quasi judicial hearings, and with the same choices of in-person, virtual, or hybrid. And then the third issue to be decided today is to what date you would like to reschedule the July sixteenth quasi judicial hearings that were canceled. So those are the three, um, items or issues that have to be decided today. Um, and both, uh, Morris Massey, um, and Kate Wells will, um, do a short presentation on, um, the various options.
All right, thank you very much, any questions from council at this time? If not, we'll go to, um, Morris Massey, um.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Councilman Goode.
Mr. Chair, I know Miss Grimes said the quasi judicial for the July sixteenth, but what about the July sixteenth, uh, council meeting that was canceled with both the agenda items? Is that a part to, uh, be, uh, rescheduled as far, as far as this is, uh, agenda?
Actually, Councilman Goode, the, um, the July, July sixteenth regular agenda items will be heard, uh, this Thursday, um, July twenty-third, in the afternoon, I think, beginning at one-thirty.
Yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll be aware of that, of the whole schedule, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, um, I believe we have, uh, Kate Wells or Morris Massey present at this time, the different options that we have.
Steven, talk about the regular meeting.
Good afternoon, this is Morris Massey in the Legal Department, and I'm gonna go through the chart that shows the various options that we've outlined, and I know it's a little hard to read, you may want to zoom in on it, um, but.
Just for quasi judicial.
But this, this is for the, your quasi judicial options, although the same sort of options are available for the regular meeting as well. But this is, we really did this chart for the quasi judicial hearing, um, options. And we broke it down into three options, in-person, hybrid, and virtual. And then there are risk and benefits associated with each of the, um, different options. So we broke the risk and benefits down into three categories, health, legal, and technological. And obviously, the in-person meeting, um, as we've just heard from Dr. Holt and as you all are aware, poses the highest health risk, and obviously, this led to last week's cancellations. I would note there are several local governments still holding in-person meetings, including Manatee County, uh, where, which is utilizing its convention center for meetings, uh, that meet CDC protocols like Tampa has been doing in the past. Um, I may skip to the third column, which is the virtual, and the virtual has the lowest health risk, but presents the greatest legal and technological risk involved. Um, the legal risks, um, include procedural due process issues, um, you have to, typically in quasi judicial hearings, you have to have the ability to identify and square witnesses, provide for the ability to cross-examine witnesses, and, uh, allow for the submission of documentary evidence. And this is a much more difficult process when you go to a virtual than an in-person type of setting. And, uh, Mr. Mechanic mentioned the waiver, um, yeah, if, if City Council elected to go virtually or a hybrid, uh, the City Attorney's Office would expect and, and, and would require a waiver of procedural due process claims from each applicant, and request that the applicants also identify, indemnify the city from third-party due process claims, because the notice parties, the, the neighbors, the neighborhood associations, they also have procedural due process rights and could also bring claims against the city. Um, the other thing that we need to note in connection with virtual hearings is that currently, the Governor's Executive Order allowing for virtual meetings and then in doing away with the physical forum requirement expires on August first. We all expect that that, um, uh, executive order will get extended, but it has not been done so yet. And that obviously creates issues from a noticing perspective at this point in time. So that's, that's another issue that we would have to face if you all went all virtual. Then from a technological, uh, perspective, and this is really technological and manpower, we, we'll have to have visi- have to have the visual technology for quasi judicial hearings. The conference call model that we've used will not work. You will need, you will need, you will need to be able to be viewed and be able to view persons who are testifying and the various evidence that's being submitted in the quasi judicial hearing. We're going to have to arrive at special procedures for introduction of documentary evidence and the, and provide for the ability of everyone involved to see that evidence. Um, we'll ha- also have to institute some additional procedures for the orderly conduct of quasi judicial hearings. Um, and this is going to involve the assistance of multiple, uh, departments and persons on the city's end, just want you all to be aware. Obviously, technology and our innovation department will be involved, um, the City Clerk's Office will be heavily involved, as we'll need the clerk to manage the submission and flow of documentary evidence, manage the official notice, manage panelists or persons that are, uh, that will attend virtually, uh, and speakers and identify speakers and documents as it attaches to each separate quasi judicial hearing. It also affects you all and your aides, um, as we're, we're going to need to make sure you all have the appropriate technology to, to go through this process, either virtually or through the hybrid model. And you, we need to make sure you all are able to utilize that technology in an effective manner so that the hearings will work. Um, also, yeah, the City Council is going to especially make, uh, put some burden on the City Council Chair and to, because you have to manage the flow of the meeting, so you'll have to know in advance who the speakers are going to be, attached to each hearing, and, and, and with the assistance of the City Clerk's Office, manage the flow of the meeting. Um, I would note, yeah, as is noted by, uh, Mr. Kramer, uh, several local governments are holding quasi judicial hearings, uh, virtually, but they're doing so with varying degrees of success. Um, St. Pete has gone to a virtual quasi judicial hearing model, but as many of you may, uh, have read, they've had me- a meeting interrupted by a third, a third party who illegally accessed the technology being used and broadcasted the facilities and inappropriate messages at that meeting. Um, some of the other jurisdictions noted, like Miami and Jacksonville, there have been, even though they are going to a virtual model, they have, uh, canceled several of their meetings anyway, quasi judicial meetings, and many of the parties have, uh, have continued, many of the applicants have continued their, their applications. Um, and I'd also note that, uh, when we look at these other local governments, very few of them have the volume of quasi judicial hearings that you do, uh, at City Council. Um, a lot of them have hearing officers, or they have, um, planning and zoning boards. So by the time it gets to their City Council, they have a lot of items that are really type of items, and they don't need to have a full-blown hearing before, um, City Council. Um, the hybrid model combines elements from both the virtual and person meeting. Um, Pasco County's been noted as a good example, they require that the commissioners, at, at core of their commissioners actually be, be present. Um, they strongly encourage, um, all the applicants, and to the extent they don't need staff present in the room, they, they probably encourage virtual participation, and they provide several ways for people to participate virtually, although they do have the ability, on a case-by-case, uh, basis, to physically, uh, be present, uh, and present evidence to the board. Uh, one of the advantages of the Pasco County hybrid model, as we have a physical forum present, you don't have to worry about the Governor's Executive Order any longer, um, which, which is basically waiving the physical forum requirement, but you still have the procedural due process issues involved, and so we would still want a waiver and indemnification from applicants. Um, the other hu- hybrid model that we're aware of, Hillsborough County has come up with a hybrid model, although they really haven't exercised it yet, they canceled their land use hearing officer and zoning hearing master, uh, meetings in March, and they canceled the meetings they had scheduled for this week, um, because of the high rate of COVID cases in Hillsborough County. Um, but their hybrid model's different than the Pasco County model, they have a physical location for, uh, the public to go to if they want to present evidence or to speak, but the land use hearing officer or the zoning master and county staff will not be present at that location. Um, so those are, this is the various options that City Council has available to it, and obviously, we're willing to assist and support and, uh, counsel whatever, uh, vote it wants to go. I guess the other option, and it's not really on the list, and it, I don't think this is where folks want to go, especially, uh, based on, well, Mr. Kramer, Mr. Mechanic's, uh, testimony, but obviously, with quasi judicial, um, you know, we could suspend quasi judicial hearings until we're able to have in-person hearings. I guess that's the other alternative that's out there, so, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, uh, it's, uh, kind of my attention, uh, did all council members receive this, uh, this chart that we're discussing with the different options? If not, we can, if you're in front of your computers, we can send it out, uh, now and make sure that it's distributed. Does everybody have this chart that shows the in-person, the hybrid, and the virtual options? That just breaks it down with pros and cons, or no?
Mr. Chair?
Vera? Go ahead, Orlando, uh, Councilman Goode's go.
I, 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 well, I was kind of bet, I haven't seen it, but, uh, my aide is listening, uh, we can send it to her, she'll get it to me right away, we'll try to pull it up.
Okay.
We'll go out, we'll get that sent right away.
I, I just got it, this is Vera, and I'm looking at it, it's not huge.
Okay, um, what about you, Councilman Dinkfelder, I thought I heard your voice? Yeah, I'm okay. All right, is there anybody else not have this chart?
This is Charlie, I don't have the chart, Mary's looking for it.
Okay, uh, it should be in the, uh, email, coordinating with my, with my aide, just to make sure, so, okay, um, we have Kate Wells as well, uh, to present, Steve?
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Kate Wells, Chief Assistant City Attorney. In addition to the chart, um, that the council members received that outlines the quasi judicial hearing options that Mr. Massey just described, um, I prepared a summary of the July sixteenth agenda items that will need to be rescheduled. In addition to, I provided some calendars for the next three months, as, so that we can get a better idea of, um, if we're moving forward with hearings, when, um, when the ideal time would be to reschedule them. In looking at your July sixteenth, uh, daytime agenda, there are several items that need to be rescheduled, including six, uh, review hearings or appeal hearings, these are quasi judicial items, uh, when you, yeah, I don't know, I don't see that we're bringing up the, um, the presentation, it was labeled, um, quasi judicial or City Council schedule for land use hearings, and if we could go to the next page? If we can go to the, there we go. So this is the summary of the, uh, agenda items, uh, for the daytime, as I was saying, for the daytime meeting, uh, there are six total applications that fall under the category of the review or appeal hearings. And when those are rescheduled, they will require a minimum of thirty days' notice. In addition, we have several items that fall under the category of quasi judicial hearings. We have seventeen applications that, uh, rezoning or special use or alcoholic beverage applications that were on second reading and adoption. When these get rescheduled, they will require, uh, a minimum of a public, um, published advertisement, ten days in advance of the hearing. Uh, we also have item eighty-four, which was an amendment to the Rocky Point Development Agreement, that requires, uh, an approximately eight-day advance notice, uh, in, in the way of a published advertisement. And then item eighty-five was a public hearing that had been scheduled on a notice of intent to revoke, suspend the special use permit that had been issued to the establishment known as Mole y Abola. Uh, we had previously requested that that item be continued to August twentieth. Uh, the other item on the daytime agenda is a legislative matter, it was item sixty-six, and it was a proposed amendment to Chapter twenty-seven with regard to the billboard ordinance. If you'll recall, this was a privately initiated text amendment by Todd Pressman, um, and it too was scheduled for second reading. Um, and then with, with regard to the evening meetings, there are thirteen rezoning applications that will need to be rescheduled, and of course, those also require, um, a thirty-day notice. Uh, the next page of your material, the agenda, current agenda for the month of August, however, I actually included, um, the applications that were scheduled for, um, July thirtieth in the evening, you'll see that, commencing at five oh one, uh, we have a total of sixteen applications, eleven of which are plan amendments, and five are quasi judicial hearings. Uh, and then starting in the month of August, uh, we have two review hearings scheduled during the daytime on August sixth, and that evening, we have a total of thirteen quasi judicial rezoning applications. And then moving on to August twentieth, we have a total of twelve quasi judicial rezoning applications that are currently scheduled. And then the following week, uh, on August twenty-seventh, there are only three alcoholic beverage applications, uh, scheduled for the evening session. And then moving on to the month of September, uh, you will see that we have three review hearings scheduled the morning of September ninth, or I'm sorry, September third, um, and then that evening, we set aside for the budget hearings. Uh, then the following week, in the evening session, we have ten quasi judicial rezonings that are scheduled. Uh, the following week, on September sixteenth, we're proposing second of the two budget hearings. And then on the seventeenth, during your daytime regular meeting, we have three review hearings scheduled. Uh, the following week is when, on the twenty-fourth, is when you have your, um, workshop scheduled, and that evening is set aside for the alcoholic beverage applications. Currently, we don't have any applications scheduled for that night. Um, and you'll see on this page and the next page, um, there are areas that are highlighted in yellow, those are times or dates that we've identified as, as potentially available to reschedule the items from July sixteenth. And then finally, for the month of October, on the next page. And then finally, for the month of October, on the next page, we don't have any quasi judicial hearings until October 8th in the evening, currently have to be scheduled. And then on October 22nd, which is the night generally set aside for the alcoholic beverage applications, we currently have zero scheduled. So that's just a quick summary of the items that need to be rescheduled and your calendar moving forward, certainly available to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Do you have any questions at this time for Ms. Wells?
Vera, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And question for you, Mr. Chair, do we talk about the different options or you just want us to do questions at this time, sir?
No, I mean, if you have questions at this time, we can, you know, this is a public meeting, so we can have a discussion ultimately with what we wish to do moving forward. We have the three choices of virtual, hybrid, or in-person. You know, we've heard from Dr. Holt, we could certainly get another physician or expert at a future meeting because I, you know, there are others out there as well, but we have the calendars in front of us, so we see what's coming in August, we see what's open in September and October, but remember in September, we also have the two budget public hearings, and I, you know, I don't know if that would, if that could be done virtually, being that it's the budget, not a quasi judicial, or if we have to meet in person for that. You know, I don't know, that's a question for our legal folks. But yeah, if you wish to ask questions of the attorneys now, Councilman Vera, that's fine, and then we can have, after questions, we can go to the discussion of how we wish to move forward.
Okay. Well, I have no questions. The presentation was great. I'll hold off then until, if you want to hold off for statements, we can do that later than Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir.
Okay. At this point, I believe the attorneys have presented. Ms. Grimes, Massey, and Wells have spoken. We have the calendars in front of us, or you should have the calendars with the available date. And then we have the different options. I did communicate with my aide to make sure that everybody had it, so I hope, Councilman Miranda, if you ate it already by email at least.
Mr. Chairman, this is Gina Grimes. I just wanted to mention, number one, that Russell Hopper is on, from TNI, the Director of our Technology and Innovation Department, is on the line if you have any questions that he would be directed at him. And then I just want to take you back to the three issues that have to be decided today. And the first issue is probably the easiest one to address, and that is the manner in which you plan to conduct your regular meetings, workshop meetings, and CRA meetings. And it, those types of meetings being non-quasi judicial don't have the same procedural due process concerns that a quasi judicial hearing presents. So there, it's an easier issue for you to decide whether you want to have those virtual or hybrid. And also with me today is Chief of Staff John Bennett, who would like to address the regular meetings and the manner in which they're conducted.
All right. Chief Bennett, if you'd like to go ahead, sir.
All right. Good afternoon, Chairman. Good afternoon, Council. As Councilman Goode's mentioned, the, there is a summary legend agenda that came out for the meeting on the 23rd. It was dated yesterday as of July 20th at 12:15 PM. That agenda has been color coded based on the discussion of emergency powers, virtual meeting, and those items that were requested to be pulled for consideration. So if you haven't had a chance to look at that agenda and its color coding, but that's what's expected to go in front of you at 1:30 on Thursday in makeup for the meeting that was just canceled recently. So if there's any questions on that before we adjourn, just wanted to be here to answer those. And as Ms. Grimes mentioned, we have both Russell Hopper and Ashley Bowman on. If you're making your decisions between in-person, hybrid, or virtual, they can answer questions based on the best use of supporting technology as it relates to the meeting itself, the legalities of the meeting, the intricacies of the meeting, and the public comment of the meeting. So we're just basically here to answer questions from here on out.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the Chief of Staff? Councilman Goode?
I guess this is for TNI Russell. I'm myself personally, I'm not interested in in-person, but I am interested in virtual to see if we can pull this off for quasi judicial and for regular council, which the Chief of Staff just said that we believe virtual would not be a problem for regular council. So I just want to hear from TNI, what are the parameters for this virtual for quasi judicial, can we pull this off? Because I think it's very crucial at this time with the matters that are going on in the city and in this county with the COVID-19 increase.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Did you want to comment now, or do you want me to fill you folks in later?
Mr. Chairman, is that appropriate now for you, sir? You'd like it later?
No, go ahead. I mean, while we have everyone here, sure, go ahead, sir.
Okay. Thanks, sure. You know, for us, it's been, from a technological standpoint, obviously, we have a great deal of technical expertise and equipment that we can bring to bear, both from a presentation standpoint, from a virtual meeting standpoint. What we have been trying to do on your behalf is to balance your own technical requirements, the legal requirements, and the manpower that we have, you know, stationed toward this and supporting everyone. And what we have found, in general speaking, the hybrid option is an option that allows us to have the best balance between meeting your internal needs, your, the needs of the onsite public and support, and getting the broadcast message out in the most reliable fashion. As we move either way, we find that there are difficulties involved. The more virtually we go, the more people that are involved, the more internet connections, the more different kinds of devices, the more different kinds of connection styles, and that introduces a level of difficulty. Some of you may have even had an audio blip today. This is one of the issues that we become concerned with. There are natural issues that happen when we're using the general purpose internet for these kind of meetings, but they do pose a specific issue when you're doing quasi judicial and you need to have a quorum present. And again, I'm not speaking in a legal sense, I'm saying in order to support that from a technological standpoint, that guarantees us the chance for you to have a meeting that can continue and move forward. There are some logistical matters if we go with a virtual component for quasi judicial, where we have to decide how will we get the materials to us? How will they be digitized? How will they be displayed? Because obviously, things that we just drop on the doc cam when we're in a, you know, a physical meeting are more difficult to pass and present, you know, when we're in a virtual home. So those are logistical issues. The more we move toward a, the lower end of the spectrum where we're just doing audio, it's a more reliable situation for us. So there is a continuum here. You know, again, in our opinion, the most reliable way is minimize the technology, have a hybrid component, and then I can guarantee that your message will reach the people, that you will have a quorum, and they will be able to move forward. But again, folks, we're at your discretion, and of course, we can bring, we can bring the technology we need. Many of you know we've already started distributing devices to the council members, teaching how to use them, teaching you how to support yourselves, having you be comfortable in those situations doing that sometimes can provide, can propose a logistical challenge, and we would have to work with you through that. That's my general comment for now, unless you guys have some specific questions.
Well, you know, again, I thank you for the input that you guys have given me that's kind of helped me now with this situation because I'm finding a home at this time. I just want to get more information detailed. I'm hopeful and purple, you know, with anything, this is the new time of year that we in. This is probably going to go on for another maybe 12, 11 months, and I'm hoping that even though we don't have the capability or don't have all the answers, that we're looking to make sure that for the future, we'll be able to do what we need to do regardless of what situation arises. Your thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any other questions at this time regarding the TNI? All right.
Chairman, this is, Chairman, this is John Bennett again. I would ask that Mr. Hopper address the capacity issues briefly as it relates to the capabilities with the technology. And what I specifically mean is managing the number of participants against the number of public comment based on the platforms we have available, because I know in the past when we were trying to, and it's not a matter of the virtual, it's a matter of, to me, the video versus the audio, and where the capacity levels reach on those different platforms as related to handling public comment as well. So if we could just dissect this just a little more with Russell Schop to give council a better understanding of the virtual parameters, that would be helpful.
All right. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman Dingfelder has a question. Go ahead.
This is to John Bennett as well as to the technical folks. Yesterday, I had a conversation with the county zoning folks to see what they were doing, what they were planning, and I think one of our city attorneys alluded to it a few minutes ago. So they're plan, they were planning on doing a hybrid, and they backed off on it. What I was wondering, what I was wondering about was have our technical people spoken with Hillsborough County technical people to see what they're doing? Have our legal folks spoken with their legal folks to see what they're doing? And I'm going to assume if they can, if they can figure it out, we can figure it out. But I think the key is that one of the things that Adam Gormley, the zoning attorney and administrator over there, said to me was that they mandated that any, Charlie, you're on, Charlie, you got a news conference.
I'm sorry.
They mandated that anybody who was submitting documents had to submit them several days in advance, and that was part of the, you know, emergency process. So I think as long as that is abided by, then that overcomes the, some of the technical issues, because that way the documents from the community, the documents from the petitioner, all can get in, in advance and be circulated to all of us in advance.
All right. Anything else, Councilman?
I was waiting, I was waiting for Mr. Bennett or our special to respond to.
This is Morris Massey, Legal Department. I have spoken with Adam Gormley as well, and we're aware of what their process are going through, and yes, we would probably institute, if we went to a virtual or a hybrid model, a similar process requiring that documentary evidence be submitted in advance so that it could be distributed, so that, and so, and we're aware of how they're setting it up technologically as well, and how they're having the meetings really virtually almost truly, so we're aware of that.
All right. And Morris, this is a follow-up, Mr. Chairman. So in light of that, could we do the same hybrid? We recognize that we can always be sued, we're always going to get, you know, get sued about something, but, but in, you know, putting aside the fact that somebody might sue us on due process, other than that, is the city attorney comfortable with a hybrid model? Because obviously, I mean, I'm going to speak for myself, but I think the rest of council would agree, that there's no way until those numbers go down to something that Dr. Holt suggested, which I'm sure is at least a month or two away, that we need to either not do quasi judicial or go to a hybrid.
This is Gina Grimes. Mr. Chairman, Massey?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Mr. Dingfelder, it's really not a question of maybe getting sued or we might get sued. As you well know, we currently have eight legal proceedings and lawsuits pending against this council in the last year with respect to quasi judicial matters. So it's a very significant concern of mine that in handling these meetings that we do so with as much protection as possible. And we are willing to support a hybrid type meeting, but we will require that the participants, the petitioners execute both a hold harmless and an indemnification. I have a concern that third parties, interested parties, neighbors have also in the past historically filed suits against the city, so I'm concerned about their involvement and their ability to raise due process claims. So if a petitioner chooses to go forward under the hybrid model, then they would have to issue both a hold harmless and indemnification. But with that, I would feel comfortable going forward, but again, what council needs to realize is the significant burden that it will place, not just on the city staff in general, but especially on the clerk's office, on the city council attorney, and on your aides, and ensuring that these meetings are handled in the best way possible.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from other council members?
Vera, if I may.
Go ahead.
Was it, was it me, or this is Vera? Was it Louis Vera? Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, without getting much into it, I mean, I strongly support the hybrid option for reasons that I'll get into later, but for the city attorney, Ms. Grimes, correct me if I'm wrong, I just want to confirm this. After a ruling by council, a potential party has 30 days in which to file their cause of action. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So yeah, so we're not dealing, thank God, with some law statute limitations or something like that, so we would know. So this is, you know, kind of what I glean from that, which is if we do begin to have a lot of these problems with people potentially, I don't want to use the word taking advantage of, but I'll just use it here for lack of a better term, of this tiny opening, then we can, I would think, deal with it at that time if we learn that that's becoming an issue, but we should learn rather quickly because of the 30 days, I would think. And also just wanted to say, again, the obvious, that, you know, we all appreciate the work of our hardworking city attorneys, starting with Gina Grimes. We pretty much took out the, and I say this jokingly, the land use departments of Hillward, Henderson, Ken, and Ingersoll Shoemaker, and a bunch of other firms, and I say that jokingly, here for the city of Tampa, and we're just really, really lucky to have these hardworking men and women work for us in these really troubled and stressed times, and I just wanted to note that. But again, it's something that we should know rather quickly if we're going to have that kind of a problem, then I would think, I would think. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman, Chairman?
Mr. Chairman Martin Shelby, if I can just follow up. Council has, and the city attorney's office has also had to deal with a provision in Florida statutes, 70.51, which allows in effect for mediation to stay those proceedings, and certainly Attorney Kate Wells has been very actively involved in those, and that certainly takes a lot of staff time and work to be able to handle those, and what that does is in effect allows the petitioner to stay or told the time that the suit has to be initiated. And maybe Ms. Wells would like to follow up that, how she's been involved in several of those as a result.
Ms. Wells, any comment or response? Do we have Ms. Wells on the line still?
Good afternoon. Sorry about that. I was on mute. This is Kate Wells with the Legal Department. With respect to the litigation that has been sued as a result of some of the decisions of council going back to, I believe, September of this, of last year, we do have five different items that are going through the mediation process under section 70.51 of the Florida statute. And I would expect, once we know how council wants to move forward with their quasi judicial hearings, we've got one item that would have been presented to city council last week with an mediated settlement for council's consideration, and I anticipate another one that will be ready for your consideration. And I anticipate, um, another one that will be ready for your consideration probably within the next, um, month or so, depending on your schedule. Uh, but with, with the other items, we're still, um, going through the mediation process. So it's a, a little soon to tell, um, what kind of outcomes we can anticipate on, on those items.
All right.
Mr. Chairman Charlie Miranda, I'd just like to ask my thanks, sir.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Before we end this meeting, I've got four motions that I've got to make regarding the budget that have to be addressed so that we can put it on the agenda. If not, we're going to be in trouble.
Okay.
If I can, if I can address that, Mr. Miranda, can that, are those motions necessary? Or can they wait until Thursday when we have those being taken up? Do you, it's, it's?
Thursday, Thursday is already going into the last, I need something be done for the mayor on the August the sixth. I need something for the budget committee, August the twentieth. And then we have a meeting of September the third, but I don't see nothing in the sheet that I got now for the budget, uh, to, to be presented to council for the first approval. And then the second one is the sixteenth. So you're going to need two special call meetings, one on the third and one on the sixteenth, but whatever.
All right, we can look at that and see about scheduling those items, um, once we decide how we're going to proceed. Um, anybody else have any comments or questions at this time? All right, hearing none. Uh, what is the pleasure of council? How do you wish to proceed with these meetings coming up? Councilman Miranda brought up several points, of course, August sixth with the mayor's budget presentation, the twentieth, and then the public hearings for the budget in September, um, with those workshops. Any comments, discussion, motions, uh, from any council members?
Well, I can make the motions now, so that we have it.
All right.
I don't want to wait till the last second something happened and, and we have a, a misunderstanding and we, we look not, not too bright. Uh, if I may, can I make those motions now, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we ask the mayor to present the twenty twenty-one budget to the city council on August the sixth at nine AM the year twenty twenty.
Mr. Chairman, Citro of seconds.
Captain Citro with a second. Uh, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman Martin Shelby.
Yes, sir.
If I can, if I can just, uh, make inquiry of city council. City council did, uh, recently, um, make a motion that required public comment to appear first on the agenda. And I wonder how council wishes to, um, uh, handle that motion in light of Mr. Miranda's motion.
Being that the mayor will be coming and presenting this budget, and generally, as we have in the past, the mayor goes before the agenda begins, um, would we like to then shift public comment after the mayor's presentation?
That's a question of council.
Yes, I definitely, Dingfelder, Dingfelder definitely says so. Says yes? Dingfelder says yes, I think the ma- I think the mayor should just be up and be able to get in and out. Now, will this be a live in-person meeting and presentation from the mayor? Or can the mayor present this virtually? Um, that's another discussion to have, you know, for that date. Any council members wish to opine on that?
Um, Mr. Chair, this is Vera, if I may. I mean, I, I would strongly suggest, given COVID nineteen, that, you know, uh, that this meeting, uh, with regards to the mayor and the budget, uh, take place virtually. Um, I, I, I just think, given the numbers that we just recently heard right now, um, we don't want to have, uh, a, a, a situation, we're going to have a ton of people there, um, uh, uh, with regards to the budget and have, uh, a, a situation that is troubling and compromising for all of us. Um, I, that's my opinion.
I, I agree with you, you know, I mean, hearing Dr. Holt, hearing from other people in the, uh, medical field, uh, looking at the numbers, because we do get the reports every day. We see how the numbers are climbing statewide. I understand that there's increased testing, but we're not seeing a, uh, a, um, a dip in numbers, you know, or a, or a substantial decrease. We see the numbers here in the city of Tampa and also, um, in those presentations with the ma- mayor's budget. You know, it, as we've seen in the past, uh, everybody shows up for that. It's always a large crowd, um, that are there for the budget and they, they leave afterwards. But if we're here for the sake, uh, for the discussion of public safety and how we move forward, I think it would be reckless and irresponsible to, um, have the mayor's presentation any other way besides, uh, virtual. Uh, again, you know, the budget is always, uh, public and it's always available. Um, you know, virtual or in person, the message still comes across. This is not a quasi judicial matter on the mayor's part, the budget presentation. So I think, uh, going virtual on that would be absolutely key. Any other council members have any, um, any other thoughts on that?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman Charlie Miranda, again, I'm sorry, my phone went bonkers and I had to redial to get back in, so I just came back on.
Okay, no, well, what I, what I was saying was in regards to the mayor's budget presentation and Councilman Vera said that, um, you know, he would, he would suggest it going virtual. And the reason is in the past, I mean, we, we've been here for several budgets, several of us. And we see how, uh, crowded the room gets. Um, there are people that specifically show up for this and then they leave, um, not for public comment, not, but just to see the mayor, see the budget. But I think it's something that can be done virtually, again, because the budget is always, um, available for the public. It's public record, it's available to anybody that wishes to see it. Um, so, you know, having it, um, you know, being that we're having this discussion here, uh, with COVID nineteen numbers, we see the spike, we see the numbers not leveling out, not plateauing, we see the, the increases, I think it would be reckless and irresponsible to have it any other way except, uh, virtual. And this is for the sake of public safety, um, again, because the data's there, the medical professionals' opinions are there. Um, and so having said that, I think, um, if it's a non quasi judicial, I think, you know, council should, should see about, uh, anything that we can do virtual, we do virtual, uh, for the foreseeable future. Um, and then, you know, the, the discussion on quasi judicial is separate, but, uh, that, that was what was said, sir.
I, I'm, 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 I'm just thinking of the years past. I believe the mayor just makes the budget presentation, she doesn't speak on it on, on August the sixth, of, uh, of August. I think the mayor makes the, the budget presentation when, when, when it's, it's spoken to, uh, on the, uh, either the third or, or the sixteenth, I forget which one.
Okay.
Maybe somebody in the financial department can tell me.
Chairman, this is John Bennett.
Yes, sir.
Chairman and council, it's, it's our understanding that if, if council makes a motion for the mayor to present the budget at nine o'clock, were at your pleasure virtually on the sixth, that the rest of staff will remain as participants to answer questions, should there be any.
All right. So what is the pleasure of council? Councilman Miranda does have the motion on the floor to invite the mayor, um, uh, sixth, on the sixth, before public comment. Um, let's take a vote on that motion.
Mr. Chair, could I just make a one, this is Carlson, one statement. Um, we, we promised the public in the, I think it was the last meeting, that we would, uh, go, uh, have them go first. If the mayor is going to go first, which I understand, I think that someone from the city should reach out to the five or ten people who normally speak before us, just so there's some expectation set. And then typically, I've only been through this once, but typically after the mayor presents, there, as Chief Bennett just said, there's Q and A and other presentations. I think that after the mayor speaks, we should take public comment then and then have the rest of it. Because otherwise, um, you know, that there's, there's, there was always a public expectation, I think that they would speak first and that we've gone back to their expectation. If we take that away and make them wait an hour or two, I think they're going to be angry.
Mr. Chairman Dingfelder? Yes, sir, go ahead. Um, Bill, I, I agree with you, um, you know, that, that it kind of was a disaster when they were all waiting there physically. But in this case, we're talking about a virtual meeting and we're talking about them, the public participating virtually, either, you know, uh, on the phone. I don't know how we're going to work it, if it's going to be live on the phone or pre-taped on the phone. But either way, I'm not as concerned about them waiting, um, this time because they can wait in the comfort of their own home or they can pre-tape their comments in advance. So it's a slightly different scenario, but I appreciate your, your concern as we all have for the public. Thank you very much, Councilman. Go ahead, Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, I think a lot of people want to just get on with their day and go to, go to work. And so it would be helpful, uh, whatever we do, if it's not right, if they're not allowed to speak right at night, I think somebody should reach out to the people who normally come so that, um, we set expectations.
Absolutely, absolutely, we can do that. And again, as Councilman Dingfelder said, should it be virtual? Um, you know, we have a pre-recorded, um, three minutes per person, or should they wish to speak live or email? So there's different, um, points of accessibility for it, where everybody gets to be heard and everybody gets the opportunity. But again, um, you know, they're in the comfort of their home or their job or wherever they are, um, and they have more flexibility instead of a time certain. Considering the circumstances of, of COVID nineteen and being that it's virtual, virtual makes it a little bit, um, easier because the people will still be allowed to speak. So nobody's silenced and nobody's inconvenienced. I think it's more of a convenience, uh, moving forward. So, um, if there's no other discussion, we have the motion on the floor from Councilman Miranda and second, Councilman Citro for August sixth at nine AM for the mayor to, uh, speak before public comment. And, um, do we have, um, all those in favor if we do a roll call vote, being that we're virtual? Suing, would you like to, uh, roll call vote?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Anasakal?
Yeah.
Motion carry with Councilmember Miranda being the maker of the motion and Councilmember Citro seconding the motion.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Miranda, do you have any other?
The, the, the second one is the one regarding the citizen budget advisory, but that's already on the September third. So I would imagine that's, uh, that, that's set up for, um, I believe that's on for September. I mean, let me, let me look, excuse me. August twentieth, I'm looking at, I got to look August twentieth. Yeah, that's already on the budget advisory committee, that's on the agenda.
Okay, all right, so that's.
That would take care of that one.
And then you have the motions for, number for the public hearing?
The one I need, the, the two that I need now is the one for, uh, it's not on September third, so there's going to have to be a special call meeting after our day session, uh, at five oh one for the budget, uh, presentation.
All right.
And that's a first reading.
All right, council.
Citro, seconds.
Uh, Thursday, September third at five oh one. Uh, Councilman Citro, I believe, seconded that. Any discussion? No, all right, roll call vote?
Vera?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Anasakal?
Yeah.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carry with Councilmember Miranda being the maker of the motion. Was it Councilor Citro that seconded that motion?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, was that a virtual meeting on, in Sep- first week of September? That, I'm going to wait for Councilman Miranda to make his, um, his last motion, um, and then we'll, we'll decide on that. But I, that's what I'm anticipating, but again, we have to have the vote and discussion on that. Councilman Miranda, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the, the last one is.
Maybe the motion should include the virtual language, because I'm not comfortable voting to set a, a meeting unless I know if it's virtual or otherwise. So I apologize.
I'll, I'll go back, that's a good point. May I, may I go back and make the one on September the third again, a virtual meeting? And what happens if it's virtual, then it can't change.
Mr. Chairman, I.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, you understand.
May we ask the city attorney to opine as to whether the budget presentation, uh, can proceed as a virtual meeting?
This is Morris Massey from the legal department. And we've received communication stating that the budget hearings can occur virtually as long as the governor's executive order, which is currently scheduled to expire August first, is extended. Um, so that's, uh, so that they, we can conduct them as long as the governor extends his, his executive order.
Okay, which expires August first, but, um, it, it may be extended, uh, it, it, you know, it's around the corner, less than two weeks. So, you know, but, I mean, I would like to set it now. Um, and should that change, the, uh, emergency order not be extended, then we resist and pop it. But I would like to set them for now. Um, so we have, uh, the legal opinion there that we can move forward as long as the emergency order is extended. Uh, we have a motion from Councilman Miranda for September third at five oh one PM. This is a virtual budget, um, public hearing. We have a second, was it from Councilman Citro?
Correct.
All right, uh, if we can have a roll call then on this motion.
Vera?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes, thank you.
Carlson?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Anasakal?
Yeah.
Motion carry.
All right, uh, Councilman Miranda now, uh, final motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes, sir.
Including the.
Chairman, yeah, um, special call, virtual meeting for September the sixteenth at five oh one for the second reading of the budget and final presentation. That's the budget and that includes all the other items that come with it, the ad valorem tax and everything else that comes with it.
This is Wednesday, September sixteenth, you said?
September sixteenth, right, that's a Wednesday, I believe. That's what I was told in the paper that they gave me.
Yeah, that, that is a Wednesday. All right, we have a motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. Can we go to a, a roll call vote, please?
Vera?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Anasakal?
Yeah.
Motion carry.
All right, thank you very much. Now, um, uh, Mr. Shelby, we have discussed the different options in moving forward. Um, do we need a motion for council to, for non quasi judicial hearings, uh, and meetings that we, um, go virtual all the way through from now until, uh, this is just for, you know, regular meetings and stuff that does not require quasi judicial. Do we need a motion to make those meetings, uh, virtual from now to October? Because the part that I have in the calendar here is October twenty twenty.
If that's council's pleasure, Mr. Chairman, members of council, um, one of the logistics issues that need to be addressed, uh, looking at your calendar, is, um, uh, for instance, um, the quasi judicial matters that may be, uh, in fact, normally scheduled for regular meeting times. And I specifically refer to, uh, the second readings. Um, and I noticed on August sixth, we also have the non ad valorem assessments and, and perhaps the city attorney would like to discuss, uh, whether that can be done virtually. Uh, we have closure public hearing, for instance, on August sixth, and a decision of the zoning administrator. Now, council passed a motion, uh, recently, uh, asking for a report to come back in August as to whether review hearings can be moved to the night meeting. And I had a chance to talk with the legal department about it and, uh, and Ms. Wells. And the answer is specifically, if council wishes to go to solely virtual in the morning meetings, your regular meetings, you have to somehow remove all the quasi judicial matters that have been presently, um, scheduled. And you have to in the future not schedule any quasi judicial matters through October, if that's what council's pleasure, uh, for the morning meetings. So I guess, um, I was going to bring up yesterday, seeing if council were willing to advance, at least with regard to the review hearings, moving those to the night meetings. And today, if council wishes to truly, uh, make the morning regular meetings fully virtual, then they have to give some sort of direction and perhaps, uh, get some counsel from the city attorney's office how to best remove those items, the quasi judicial items from the morning meeting.
Okay. So any, uh, council members have any opinion or questions on that, having heard what Mr. Shelby has just said?
Mr. Chair, this is Carlson. One thing I think we need to look at is, um, when we started up the, the meetings, um, what was it, in May? And, and, you know, I was one of the, one of the loud voices saying we need to restart these because we need to keep the economy moving, as, uh, Mr. Kramer said earlier, too. Uh, I think it's essential that we keep the economy moving. Um, with that said, we're in a pandemic and, and my preference would be to go all virtual. It doesn't sound like, like legal will let us do that. But if, but whatever we do in shuffling around the, the schedule, uh, we, I think we need. But if, but whatever we do in shuffling around the, the schedule, uh, we, I think we need to be reasonable, too. There was one day where we went, um, twenty hours or something like that, and I don't think, I don't think that's realistic, uh, for us, uh, because you have to really be able to focus even at eleven or twelve o'clock at night. Uh, but also for staff and the, and the community, I heard a lot of complaints from members of the community who felt overwhelmed by it as well. And if we don't listen to ourselves or staff, we should definitely listen to the community. And also, uh, just while I have the floor, I have got numerous, uh, emails from, uh, members of the public who are very upset that they don't have a virtual option. Uh, they feel unsafe coming to the meetings and, um, as, as Grimes said, we have had lawsuits from third parties, and I think we need to seriously consider how to make sure the neighborhood leaders and, uh, and residents, um, have a chance for their full voice to be heard virtually, um, even in the quasi judicial meetings. So I, if we, if we, as we start rescheduling, let's please not pile everything up in one day. Some, we're, whatever the openings are in the future, let's put as many as we can out there, and then let's, if we have to, add additional days. But going twenty hour days is not, is not fair to the public or, or staff or to our colleagues. Thank you.
And, yes, sir.
Ding Felder's waiting.
All right, well, we'll go Viera first, Ding Felder.
Oh, did, did you say Viera first, sir? I'm sorry.
Uh, Viera, Ding Felder, Gould. We're going that way.
Thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that. No, I, I, I was the one that burst out laughing a little bit when Councilman Carlson mentioned about the time. I, I, I say that because I agree with him. That was my inadvertent amen. Um, and, and thank you, Councilman Carlson, for mentioning that with regards to the time, which is, um, you know, one meeting, I think, lasted until about two AM. And, you know, after twelve o'clock, you know, it, it's like that movie where, what is it, the, the, the parrots turn into a pumpkin. I think after twelve, we all turn into pumpkins. And we ought to be very, very cognizant and tell that there's one thing to be ambitious and there's something else to give yourself such a, an overly ambitious agenda that you just fall over your own, over your own weight. So, uh, thank you, Count, uh, 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 Councilman for, uh, for mentioning that. Um, you know, I, I, I do believe that a lot of this, uh, the concerns over members of the public, uh, can be taken care of with a hybrid, as I understand it, which is folks being able to opine, uh, through virtual means. I know this is going to take a lot of work on behalf of the, on, on the part of the city, um, including our, our hardworking, uh, city council attorney, Mr. Shelby, who I worked with for a very long time in similar issues like this, and is really earning his paycheck at a hundred and ten percent. Uh, and of course, the, Mr. Chairman, Anascalco and your aide, Lee Edwards, et cetera. But, but we can do this, uh, because I think it's, it's worth it, um, if it can be done, which I believe that it can be, uh, to move forward our economy. Uh, one day, this COVID-19 pandemic is going to be done. Uh, it's going to be in our rearview mirror, uh, as a, as a medical condition, but not as an economic impact. And we have a duty, uh, to mitigate the damage from that pandemic in our economy as much as we can. I think that this hybrid model, as I understand it, um, uh, you know, goes a way forward in doing that, uh, with minimal exposure legally, uh, or the, the most minimal exposure that we can legally, as well as medically. Um, I, I, I think that presents at this time the best option. Maybe we look two months ahead and, and we may change course, but I think that's the most reasonable option to go forward with at that, at this time. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Ding Felder, Councilman Goode's.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, generally, I agree with everything that's been said. Um, it appears to me that, uh, Council's leaning toward hybrid. I think we've got the green light from staff and, and our legal folks that we can do hybrids for quasi judicial. Um, in, in regard to our regular meetings, I agree with Mr. Chairman that, uh, we should reschedule all of our regular meetings from now until October first to be virtual because it can be a hundred percent virtual, just like we were doing back in, in April and May. Um, in regard to the, the issue that Mr. Shelby brought up, the, in regard to the, uh, uh, the quais ties that show up on our morning agenda, uh, legal department needs to shift those to the night, to the night condition and, and lump those in with the rest of the quasi judicials. And, uh, if we have to meet, you know, every week, every Thursday night, um, or maybe even on a Tuesday night, I think all of us would be amenable, uh, to doing that until we can, you know, catch up. Um, I. But, uh, you know, uh, to try and, uh, uh, you know, keep up with the, uh, applications that are coming in and, uh, in a safe way. And I think we, I think we've sorted that out. I think we can do that in the quasi judicial form, and if we have to do it on Tuesdays and Thursdays, uh, that's probably it. So, um, I don't have the benefit of looking at the calendar that's been proposed by legal rights this second because frankly, I'm driving. Um, but, uh, but those are my, those are my thoughts.
Okay, so Councilman, uh, Ding Felder, just to clarify, you said to meet in person for quasi judicial hearings and then move anything from the daytime into the evening session. Is that what you said? But, so meet virtually for the regular meeting and then, uh, in person for the quasi judicial?
No, no, sir. Uh, I apologize, um, I, maybe I misspoke. Meet, meet virtually for the regular meeting and meet in a hybrid condition, uh, for any quasi judicial.
Okay, now.
I can too about Pasco and, and Hillsborough County, those types of hybrids.
Okay, next Thursday, we have a night meeting, um, you know, uh, with, with those kinds of, um, items. So, uh, you know, we'll, we'll discuss that after we hear from Councilman Goode because we have, you know, this week we can do virtual, uh, you know, Thursday, CRA and whatnot. And I know we have a further discussion Thursday afternoon. Um, but anyhow, Councilman Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your leadership today. Uh, I'm glad Mr. Carlson brought that up, that issue. Uh, being at Council meeting to two AM is not right for the public, it's not right for us. People are driving home, safety concerns, safety issues. You know, you kind of get drifted and people are, are getting frustrated, waiting and waiting. So I'm hoping that we, we will be looking at that to change, uh, that format because that is, that's just not right for the public. Uh, maybe we may have to do two days a week or something like that in the future to make sure we don't get overloaded and the public's not overloaded. Uh, of course, I'm from virtual, uh, you know, again, safety of, of this council, uh, the employees of the city and our citizens. Uh, I, I'm, I'm looking at the hybrid. Uh, for, for me, uh, I just can't get there in person right now because of my condition. So if there, if there's other, any other situation arising, I will have to be on the phone and be in a listening capacity. But, uh, I'm willing to work with the council, whatever you do decide, but, uh, I'm, I'm a virtual person at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, Ding Felder. Um, right. Ding Felder, again, just for clarification, Mr. Goode, that, uh, the hybrid means that, that all of the council members are not there, but that the public has the opportunity, uh, to participate, um, and, and, and we'll let legal figure out how they can participate, um, and the develop, the developer can participate. Uh, sometimes the opportunity is, you know, if, if, if the, uh, public has to go to a location to be able to stand in front of a camera by themselves, then, then that's what the public and/or the developer would have to do. But it, but it's the hybrid, and I believe, Mr. Shelby anticipates that no council member is going physically to the meeting and neither is our staff.
No, that's not the understanding.
This, this is Morris Massey. Uh, can I interrupt? There, there are two different hybrid models. Hillsborough, you're, what, what you're talking about, uh, Councilman Ding Felder is the model that Ca-, Hillsborough County is following. I think the model that we would suggest that, that council consider is what Pasco County is following, where they do have a physical quorum of their governing body present. Now, that doesn't mean everyone has to be there. If you, if Councilman Goode's can attend those meetings virtually, as long as he's got the appropriate technology, we'd only have to have four council members present. But that would be, I think, the preferred model that we would follow, that legal department would encourage you to follow. Um, if you want us to look at another, as to how Hillsborough County is doing it, it's, it's the model. Obviously, we can look at it, but it's a much, we, we think it, 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 it bears greater legal risk not to have a physical quorum present. Um, so that would be our suggestion.
And again, if I can, Mr. Chairman, to follow up on what Mr. Massey said, again, the other issue is with regard to not having to worry and wait, uh, with regard to scheduling as to the governor's executive order. Um, so, uh, and, and by the way, the public would still be able to fully participate virtually. Uh, again, we'd have to talk about an off-site, uh, location. The, the public would not necessarily, would not be in the room where the four council members are meeting. They're able to watch that, um, by, uh, uh, communications media technology. So in that regard, um, in terms of public safety, certainly four council members would have to come to a location. Presently, it's the Tampa Convention Center. I don't know what the future holds. But then the public would then be able to communicate to city council through virtual means, and if they can't make it at their own location, there would be another location where they could come and present, but that would not be physically before the city council.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, uh, Councilman.
Mr. Chair.
Who is this?
Councilman Citro, I'll speak up, Councilman Goode. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Goode, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, I, 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 you know, that's why we, we had this discussion for clarification. I'm glad that Mr. Massey, uh, was able to clarify that, and that's what I was thinking, that you would have to have somebody there, uh, to do what we need to do. So I'm glad that, uh, Mr. Ding Felder was able to, uh, bring up what Hillsborough County is doing, and Mr. Massey was to bring up, you know, Pasco, and Mr. Shelby was able to chime in. Uh, so, so again, uh, I am more in favor of a Hillsborough model. Uh, but again, if the consensus goes with the Pasco model with this hybrid, again, I'm not, uh, uh, physically, uh, able to be, if we start immediately to be, uh, a quorum this time, but I would be, uh, uh, a virtual setting. Uh, I, I yield back, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Citro.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, to Councilman Carlson's point, this is our economy, and we're not just talking about larger companies that are building, we're also talking about quasi judicial cases that we should be hearing from regular people, from homeowners. But we're also talking about an economy of contractors, carpenters, electricians, stone people, people that are helping to build our community. The sooner we get these meetings etched in stone, the sooner for our, the better for our city. Um, I very much like to meet in person. However, um, I feel that all non-quasi judicial should be virtual. I feel the quasi judicial should go to a hybrid, and I also feel to expedite these cases that are already in the line, in the queue, waiting to be heard, that have either been canceled or rescheduled, we should go to two days a week, possibly a Monday, Thursday, possibly a Tuesday, Thursday, so that we don't have all these all-day and all-night meetings. But, Mr. Chair, whatever course this, uh, council takes, we need to get back on track. We need to keep our economy moving. We need to have these people getting back to work, and I'd like to hopefully set it in stone today if we could. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other council members have any, uh, questions, comments, opinions at this point? Uh, yes, with our Chairman Ding Felder.
I'm sorry.
Councilman Ding Felder and Councilman Goode.
Okay, um, these are great comments. I think we're all on the same page. Um, Mr. Citro, fantastic comments about, you know, how the entire sector is impacted, not just, you know, wealthy developers and that sort of thing. I think that's very well taken. Um, Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, Thursday is also very well taken. I think, I agree with you completely, um, that we, we should, we should meet as often as possible, uh, without burdening our staff or legal to, to get back to where we need to be. Um, the only thing I would disagree respectfully with Mr. Massey is this. Quorum. Um, if we, if, if, if it, if Hillsborough County has, has concluded from a legal perspective that they, that their, that their commission members, that, and it's probably the official staff, that enough, like, four blocks away, we couldn't do the same thing. And the whole, the whole setup might cause some jeopardy, and it might cause some, some, uh, neighborhood group to sue us or whatever, and that's all fine and dandy, that's why we have lawyers. But I, I don't think that we should put any four council members at risk. I don't think we should put our court staff at risk. I don't think we should put our legal staff at risk. Um, I don't, I don't think it's necessary. So I think the hybrid model that I prefer, ultimately, when we get to a motion, is the one that involves the, um, uh, council members being virtual as the county commission is proposing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councilman Goode and then Councilman Viera.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, for your leadership. Thank you, again, for your leadership today. You know, this is a, a tough issue for everyone to, to kind of sink in, but again, someone who's had an experience, uh, I don't want anybody to go through this experience that, that I've had, and, and that's why I, I just have to be stern and firm in reference to, I can look at the hybrid model, not the fully understanding, and, and, and understand there are two models out there. Uh, again, I'm, I'm more in favor of the Hillsborough model for a hybrid system. Uh, I know our economy is, is, is having its ups and downs. I think we still can get the job done for our citizens, for our builders, our contractors, and I just think that for me, I think the hybrid Hillsborough would be the best model to make sure everyone is safe, because you have to remember that we have employees who are working and they're going back home to their family members and their children, and we don't want to make sure that we're not affecting everybody. And I just, uh, feel strongly about that. I yield back, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilman Viera and then, uh, Mr. Shelby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it, sir. Um, a couple of things, also, uh, uh, bringing up development agreements and plan amendments, while these aren't quasi judicial, uh, they're often treated in a, in a similar manner. So just, I, I think, uh, and, and they also have of, quite often a similar effect of, uh, potentially, uh, you know, moving forward the economy, et cetera. So I, I, uh, certainly think that's something that we ought also bring up. Um, with regards to council members appearing virtually, uh, to legal, on quasi judicial, is that permissible? I, I had recalled, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm wrong, hearing that we may not do that, um, for, for a quasi judicial. Is that permissible under your interpretation? Or recommended, I should say?
Um, Councilman Viera, this is Morris Massey, legal department. There are legal issues withholding a virtual hearing. The, if you have a quasi judicial virtual hearing at a minimum, it's going to have to be a visual hearing. It cannot be done audio. So everyone's going to have to see, able to see each other and the evidence that's presented. Um, there are procedural due process issues of, associated with having virtual quasi judicial hearings. If that's where council is moving, in which it sounds like that, that may be the sentiment of several members of city council, at a minimum, the, the legal department would recommend and would probably require is that our persons that want to move forward using this virtual kind of model for quasi judicial hearings at a minimum will have to waive any of their procedural due process claims and also indemnify and hold harmless the city from third-party claims because there are other interested parties, such as neighborhood groups, affected neighbors, that also have procedural due process rights. So that would, and the other thing I'd like to mention real quickly is, it, at, vis a vis the Pasco and Hillsborough models, is the Hillsborough County system, it, it, the way they operate is not with a full board or commission, it is with one land use hearing officer. So that's one of the reasons why that model is different than what Pasco County is doing. So.
And the other thing, one of, one other thing, Mr. Viera, is that your, your recollection, your recollection is correct. At the, at the outset of this pandemic, almost, there was almost a uniform, um, opinion that, um, virtual quasi judicial hearings were not appropriate and they weren't being held. But as this pandemic has continued on and on and on, the, and the necessity to have or hold quasi judicial, um, hearings has increased, um, legal opinions have changed and, and you've heard from the developers, they're now willing to take on more risk, um, in having the virtual meetings and, and, um, waiving, uh, their rights at due process. So that's, that's why you're seeing more and more, um, local governments conduct these meetings, um, in a virtual fashion versus, uh, versus the typical quasi judicial, um, fashion. The reason, again, that we, if we propose the hybrid was, um, in order to protect, um, the city's interest, knowing, um, that we live in a, in a development community that's very litigious. interests, knowing that we live in a development community that's very litigious and anticipating that there will be, you know, procedural problems with these virtual meetings, and in fact, someone may claim that their due process rights were violated. So to have the physical quorum present is very helpful in defending those kinds of cases.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shelby?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. One follow-up with regard to the hybrid. If council does go with the hybrid, what it does is it requires a commitment of city council to ensure that a quorum would be physically present. And as we said, a quorum is four people. That means we have to know with absolute certainty in order for the meetings to go forward that four city council members will be present. Now, what happens if a city council member of that four would not be present? It would require a fifth city council member to take that person's place. Otherwise, those meetings cannot be going forward with a physical quorum. So basically, if council member chooses to go in this direction, it requires a commitment of city council to ensure that four members would in fact be physically present.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm going Ding Felder. Ding Felder?
Yes. Mr. Shelby, your point is well taken. However, your point is based upon a presumption on the Hillsborough model, there's not that requirement. Well, there's a requirement that there's a quorum present, but it could be a virtual quorum, which is a lot easier to do. I want to point out a couple, I want to, yeah, I know, I want to point out a...
I'll shut up. Go ahead, sir.
All right. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Number one, this council now has one council member who's not only tested positive, but who's suffered a very hard, I don't know, at least four or five weeks or more with the COVID, and has obviously compromised health-wise. This council has at least three council members who will go unnamed that are over sixty years old, which puts those three council members at greater risk, according to the CDC and everything else I've read. And also, my last point to our legal staff is that, and also, we have legal staff, by the way, that's older than sixty years old, and I don't know about the clerk's office. And on top of that, we are not Pasco County. Pasco County's numbers, to the last I checked, are not nearly as bad as Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa. That's one of the reasons that we need to be extra, extra cautious, no matter who we're talking about. So again, there are differences, there are extreme differences as to why Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa might treat us differently than Manatee and/or Pasco.
All right. Anything else, Councilman Ding Felder?
No, sir, not right now.
And just to clarify, there is no one here over sixty years old. We stopped counting a long time ago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Bad joke of the day. Any response to that?
Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Shelby was trying to chime in before Mr. Ding Felder did his comments. So, can you hear Mr. Shelby?
I think Councilman Ding Felder did raise an important issue because if those three are unwilling to, or for public health reasons and their own personal safety, to be able to physically appear, and one council member who is part of that four-member quorum is not, then you're in a position of having only three members of the physical quorum, and then that puts the city in a very difficult position with how to move forward, if you're going to move forward with that sort of four-three hybrid. And it seems very clear, it seems at this point, that the seven members appearing at one time appears to be not contemplated by city council. But actually, what I was meaning to say, my purpose in raising that issue, was to be consistent with the concern that is raised by Mr. Ding Felder, bringing forth the concern of three council members conceivably being in a high-risk group.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Councilman Citra.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I think what our council, Mr. Shelby may be alluding to, is for council members to step up to the plate. I, for one, will commit to being at all in-person meetings in the future for quasi judicial. I hope that there is at least three others that will do the same, but we need to really get this economy going again. Mr. Chair, you have my commitment to be at all in-person meetings for quasi judicial.
Thank you very much. Any other council members?
Yeah, this is Charlie again. Although I'm not sixty, I commit to the same thing. I'm not worried about. You try to avoid things, and it doesn't matter if you're twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty. People die from a heart attack at ten, and they die from a heart attack at ninety, and the same thing with the virus.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, hearing not...
And if I may, Mr. Chair, this is...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
You know, on being there live, I certainly, under reasonable conditions, can commit myself to doing so. But, you know, I pay great respect to those council members who have voiced concerns about that, and I just want to say, and I think we're all in agreement that by saying we're going to be there, that in no way undercuts the, anything that anyone else has said, because I take that literally as serious as a heart attack, so to speak. And I certainly can commit to coming to meetings under reasonable, safe conditions, et cetera, but they must be held to, and that's a plan that will have to be worked out, I guess, today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
This is Carlson. I'm willing to come back in person, and I have been willing all along. I'd rather do the meetings virtually. I mean, we all, besides our own health, we have kids and family members, I have parents and others, and it's better not to try to expose everybody. For the sake of the economy, for the sake of our community, I'm willing to do it. I'd rather...